Next is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority update. With Colleen Brand Schulter, our Human Services Manager, Anne Berkland, KCRHA Chief of Staff, and Abby Anderson, KC-HRA Subregional Planning Specialist.
It's a mouthful, right? Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. As your Human Services Manager, I do work closely with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, advocating for services and the needs, not only here in Burien, but also regionally. We work closely with multiple services that the King County Regional Homelessness Authority has connection to as well. KC-HRA is here this evening to provide the first of two presentations. Tonight will be an overview of the organization and their efforts to date. They will return on June 5th to provide an update on the five-year plan and subregional implementation strategies. As you said, Mayor, please welcome Anne Berkland, KC-HRA's Chief of Staff, and Abby Anderson, KC-HRA's South King County Subregional Planning Specialist.
Thank you so much. Do I need to move this closer? Yes, okay. Thank you all so much for having us tonight. As Colleen mentioned, we are here as the first of two, and we are so excited to introduce what the King County Regional Homelessness Authority is, what we are striving towards, and how we can all work together. I am Abby Anderson, the South King County Subregional Planner.
I'm Anne Berkland, the Chief of Staff.
And I just want to first thank everyone who provided public comment. I think there was 28 folks total, and I just want to thank you for your time and investment in your community. I think that that's crucially important, and so I appreciate everyone of you taking that time this evening. You can go to the next slide, please. All right, so I want to ground us in our theory of change, what we at KC-HRA strive to enact in everything that we do. And so I'll read it out loud. We believe that if we create a homeless response system that centers the voices of people with lived experience, then we will be able to meet needs and eliminate inequities in order to end homelessness for all. So just again, thank you to those who provided public comment, and for those with lived experience that are really advocating for what you need in your community. We can go to the next slide where we'll talk a little bit about how KC-HRA came to be. Just going to the next slide to dive into some history. So in 2018 and 2019, the National Innovation Service came to King County to evaluate our homelessness response system and decided that in order to sort of break down the silos and become more unified, an ILA between King County and the city of Seattle should be signed. That ILA was signed in 2019. In 2020, we hit some curveballs, as did everyone else. And so we were able to finally hire a CEO and start operations in April of 2021. We're really excited to almost have our two-year birthday. And from there, we've been hiring and setting up systems and processes. So where we sit now in 2023 is really planning, building relationships, and trying to change the system one bit at a time. So with that, we can move to the next slide, which sort of outlines what went to us and what stuck with the city of Seattle and King County. I'm not going to go through every one of these, but it is an important distinction just to know that some things are housed within us, while other things like housing capital and development still remain with the other jurisdictions, City of Seattle, King County, and all other cities in King County. A few other just important mentions are that behavioral health also stayed with the city of Seattle and King County and did not transfer over to KC-HRA. So with that, we can move to the next slide where we'll talk a little bit more about what our role is in a little more minute. So go to the next slide again. We are really established to create a unified approach to dramatically reduce the number of unsheltered people. It feels like unity is something that's important in this community and was mentioned many times during public comment. And that is exactly what we are striving to do, is unify the region. And my job is to coordinate and unify South King County subregion. So we can move to the next slide where there's a little bit more information about what we can and what we cannot do. So we are a special jurisdiction government agency. We receive and administer public funding, so mostly contracting out to wonderful service providers so that they can do their jobs. We administer programs and policies, and then we partner with public and private organizations. However, we are not King County, despite King County being in our name. But we are not DCHS. We are not the City of Seattle Human Services Department. We are not a public housing authority, so we cannot cite services, and we also cannot levy any taxes. So just additional clarification, because we know that our role and our title is very confusing. So we can move to the next slide and talk a little bit more. I won't highlight all of these, but just some things that we've done so far in the two years since we've stood up. One I want to highlight especially is that unified planning and coordination, mostly because that is a lot of what my role is in South King County. I get to work with wonderful human services managers like Colleen and Anya. And that is something that we are really committed to, is building up partnerships in order to be able to plan and coordinate across the county and across systems. And we also oversee policies and do contract management again with those service providers. And then one other thing I want to highlight is the fourth bullet down is our Ombuds Office. I'm trying to set up systems of accountability to folks experiencing homelessness, to anyone who interacts with the homelessness system, recognizing that we are responsible for maintaining accountability within those contracts and the other things that we oversee. So we can move to the next slide, which provides an overview of our organization as a whole. Again, we have programs divisions. We have community capacity team, which really is working with nonprofits or other organizations that might not have the capacity needed to achieve their mission. And so anything that's getting in their way is something that the community capacity team can dive into and help them out with. I think it's an excellent team, and I'm really proud to have them. We also have the Program System Performance Team and the Grants Team, which oversee all of the different contracts and grants that we come in. We have our Community Impact Team. They're the data nerds that provide us all of the robust information we need in order to plan well. Subregional Planning Team, which is me, and my fellow subregional planners representing other areas of the county. And then Ombuds, like I mentioned before, External Affairs, and our system advocates, who are hard at work in the downtown core right now, piloting an approach that we're hoping to make county-wide soon. So with that, we can go to the next slide and think about what our role is kind of at a macro perspective. We're working with the current state of scarcity. It's kind of chaotic. It's a little bit of a patchwork system. And what we're really trying to get to is a point of shared abundance, where we have, we know what we need, and everybody has what they need to thrive. So another way of thinking about this in a more tangential, what it means for housing and homelessness is on the next slide showing, just, yep, perfect, showing what the current system is, which is a little complicated, and it's messy, and people might move from one type of shelter or permanent sort of housing back into homelessness, back into shelter, into rapid rehousing, and it's complicated. And so what we're hoping to do is, on the next slide, find the system where everyone has what they need, and we meet people where they are and find services that match their needs, because that, we know, is the key to success for long-term housing. So that is something that we are striving for and trying to have the right types of services to meet each person's needs. All right, and we can go to the next slide. So our, as I said, we know that the solution to homelessness is finding those right places for folks to go, and ultimately comes down to housing. And we are working on finding that at an even greater scale. And we're going to do that by the information on the next slide. Through coordination, finding the infrastructure and centralizing the resources. So this will include collaboration with advocates, with city partners, with service providers, as well as financial resources to really optimize and expand the system. So we can go to the next slide and think about a few wins. One moment. Always important to sort of recognize what we're doing now and how we can sort of capitalize on that and try to pursue the wins even further. One thing I really want to call out is our work on the emergency housing vouchers. We had one of the best emergency housing voucher programs in the nation, almost two times that of peer communities. I also want to call out, especially here in Burien, our coordination and effective severe weather response. We know that it could be better. We always know it could do better with homelessness, and especially when severe weather hits. But I have to say that the Burien severe weather shelter is incredible. I'm really glad to have gotten the chance to know all of them and thank them every time I work with them for their incredible service. They really were at overcapacity, I'm sure you know. And so I just really appreciate the Highland United Methodist Church. And then the other one up in the top-left corner, we interviewed over 670 people living unsheltered through Understanding Unsheltered Homelessness Project. And that is one of the ways that we are trying to attempt to count the number of people experiencing homelessness, which is not an easy task. And we'll dive a little bit more into that going into the next few slides, looking at homelessness data. So the next slide sort of explains what I was just saying, which is how difficult it is to count and interpret the number of folks experiencing homelessness. We have a lot of ways to do this. We have administrative data sets. We have annually how many people experienced homeless one time. We also have a moment in time, how many people are experiencing homelessness right now, tonight. And we also have statistical projections that we can use. There's a lot of different ways, and I want to say thank you to Burien. I know that we, through our project, one of the ways to count and understand the experience of homelessness partnered with Transform Burien. And so a lot of the information that we have are from Burien residents or folks that interacted with our staff there. So there's a lot of different ways to think about it, but the key message is that regardless of how we are counting the number of people, we know that there are significant gaps, especially here in South King County, that are not meeting the needs of the number of people that are experiencing homelessness. So we need to increase the number of temporary housing and sheltering options for these folks. We can go to the next slide and think about those who have been disproportionately impacted, especially when thinking about race inequity. You can see here, and I know that you might need a little bit more time to digest this slide, but the colored-in brackets or bars are the number of folks experiencing homelessness according to that one-time point-in-time count in 2020 and 2022. And then the dashed horizontal line moving across them is their respective representation in King County as a whole. So you can see some severe racial disproportionality. And that is something that we are committed to understanding and addressing as a regional homelessness authority and as we move forward with our planning. The next slide shows a little bit more about the healthcare needs that was also called out so thoughtfully in public comment. You can see here that, according to some of our measures, 51% of folks identify as having a disability, 31% identify as having a mental health disorder, and 37 identify as having a substance use disorder. And this is important to know and to understand, both as we continue to care for and find compassion for our community members, but also as we're planning and thinking through what kind of services these folks are going to need and how that looks different for every individual. So we can move to the next slide, thinking through some other data sets. This is one that my team has worked really hard on. We call it the Regional Services Database. And it's an important tool for understanding where services are and how to connect folks with them. We combined multiple data sets to understand, you know, where services are and what kind of services they offer. We also did outreach to every single service provider on this list to ensure accuracy. And we're actually doing the same right now to update it next week, really committing to having important and accurate information that's also transparent and available to the community, as this is on our website, publicly available. We can go to the next slide and see how we were able to create that database. We combined several different existing administrative data sets. So we used the Homelessness Management Information System, the Housing Inventory Count, our PSAs or contracts that are existing in our systems, and then Coordinated Entry for All. So there's a lot of different data sets. And this is one of the huge advantages of the Regional Homelessness Authority, being able to unify and bring together all of these into one place so that we can interpret it and identify gaps and help folks be connected to services. All right, I'm close to being done, I promise. So we'll go to the next slide and talk a little bit about what my team does and what my role is here. So as I mentioned before, I'm on the Subregional Planning Team. And our team is really rooted in the understanding that all 39 cities, which we have grouped into seven subregions, have unique needs. I don't think that that's surprising to anyone. And we are really committed to understanding what those unique needs are and work really closely with partners, including all of the human services planners, to understand how we can plan for and be nimble and flexible to those needs. And so we also work with a lot of different advocates. We have several groups, some of them listed here, the Forum on Homelessness, Homelessness Action Committee. We work with providers. I do a lot of site visits. And we also work with system partners, so folks over at the county or in schools or places like that. So a lot of my job is just meeting and liaising with people. I meet with the human services planners every other week to help plan and understand what's going on in South King County. And they have been a huge asset in understanding how we can support South King County and also how we can represent them in our future planning. I think we can move to the next slide, which is talking about our future planning and what we're excited to return to you all and talk about in part two of this. We are currently developing our five-year plan, which we like to call the Strategic Roadmap to Transform Our Homelessness Response System, which is really what we were tasked to do back in 2018 and 2019. However, as mentioned, we know that we can't have a plan that speaks to all the needs of every community. And so what we are also working on is the South King County Subregional Implementation Plan. And this plan really asks the question, what does it mean to implement and act on the goals in the five-year plan in South King County? This planning has just begun. It is underway. We are hoping to finish it by the end of the year and to also visit you all at least once or twice more to really get your input on what the subregional implementation plan will look like. So with that, we can go to the last slide, which is a little bit of an overview, just what's to come. We will be returning on June 5th, actually. Thank you, Colleen, for setting up the date. So we'll be returning to you on June 5th to present on what that final five-year plan will look like. It's currently in deliberation and going through some edits with our boards and committees. So it will hopefully be finalized, and we can present to you all of the details of that plan on June 5th, in addition to presenting what we've got so far on the Subregional Implementation Plan and really work together to get some feedback on that. As you can see here, then we'll work on drafting, come back with some more feedback opportunities, and hopefully finalize those plans by the end of the year. So with that, I would be open to any questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for being here tonight. And I just want to start by saying I appreciate the transparency of this presentation. And I know that y'all had a big announcement in the Seattle Times a few days ago, a week ago. So you are certainly at the forefront and center of state response, government response to finding people homes and figuring out best practices around understanding and analyzing data associated with this. So I appreciate your work, but also the transparency with this presentation specifically. I have a couple of questions about what you presented. Just what are our other cities that are in our subregional plan? So I'm assuming there's probably like five, because there's 39 in total. So what are the cities that we're lumped in with?
Yeah, so South King County is comprised of everything from Taquilla, Burien, all the way down to Auburn and Federal Way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a large area. Do you know right now how many beds, shelter, anything in that middle part of the diagram you showed us, how many available spaces there are, vacant spaces there are right now for folks that could utilize that shelter?
In South King County in particular?
Yeah.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. One thing we are working on in the five-year plan is developing a real-time bed availability. It's challenging to know in every given moment how many folks, how many vacancies there are. I can share the number of beds available. I don't have it in front of me, but it is available on our Regional Services Database. And I'd be happy to run a quick report in the morning and get that back to you. We also have it broken down by subpopulation type. So if it's open and available for like single adults, for example, or families and different subpopulations like that.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is veterans. I noticed that, I mean, you probably have this information, but you didn't have it in this presentation. But do you break it down by veterans as well? Because I know that obviously veterans have a lot of other services available to them through the VA. But certainly, I'm thinking a lot about how this is the 20th anniversary of the Iraq War, and a lot of veterans are proportionally more homeless than other population demographics as well. I'm just wondering if you can shed some light on that demographic within the work?
Absolutely, yeah. We do also, in the Regional Services Database, have information on whether or not they specifically serve veterans. So it's another category that we try to track. And I will just say again, we are updating it next week, so I will send your numbers tomorrow. But then maybe we'll also send you some next week, given that it'll be much more updated. Veterans is a category that we track, and it's also one of the main working groups that we had when we were thinking about our five-year plan. So we have about 12 working groups, all representing different subpopulations, and veterans is one of them. We're actually mirroring those working groups when we're thinking about the Subregional Implementation Plan. So we'll have a veteran-specific working group for South King County. And would also, if you have any folks that you think would be great to sit on that, we're forming the groups right now, so that would be great.
Well, I appreciate that. We have a great veterans organization here in Burien. But also, I mentioned it's 20th anniversary of the Iraq War. And I think that we can do a lot to shed light on the fact that a lot of our homeless population is our veterans. And so anything we can do to connect to some organizations that are operating here that focus specifically on veterans too, that we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you for your questions.
Other questions from council?
So in the testimony, there was discussion about a request for 30 beds. And so I'm hearing Dashboard in the Future, and to me, that means something, some kind of technology we want to put in place, so we know what's available where. Today, it sounds like it's about coordination of people. So what is it about that ask that is challenging? Is your organization the wrong one to ask at this time, and why? And then, so what does that mean for Burien and what we have to do when we say we need 30 beds? What has to happen?
Those are health or housing beds, and that process is run by the county. So the city manager has the meeting tomorrow with the county, and that's the right person to talk through about that. And then Abby has been working with your staff on this issue on a variety of different topics. But for those 30 beds, that is not within our portfolio.
There was a slide that had City of Seattle, County, and then this organization.
Yeah.
So, but it didn't talk about other cities. Is there, are there things that we need to be mindful of on that list that stay with us or move to your organization when it finally launches? Which sounds like it's going to be a while, because the five-year plan isn't finished till the end of the year. So can you talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, and just a quick point of clarification. The five-year plan should be finished within the next month or so. It's the subregional implementation plans that really dive into each subregion. That will be finished by the end of the year. So on that graphic that you're speaking to, and I realize it should have been a little bit updated, because the North King County cities have actually joined in ILA as well. But they would represent the same things that the city of Seattle has. So anything that was previously done by the county for you all will either, that was in these checkboxes, will either still be done by the county or will be done by us. So we do not cite services or do any capital development, and that is still something that you would turn to the county for. And any, if you're looking for service providers or coordination across systems, and that is something you could look to us for.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Sarah?
I had similar questions to the ones the mayor had. I listened to what you're working on, and thank you for doing it. It's obvious that you're working on plans to help avert what's going on in places like Burien right now, so that this isn't happening to people continually. It is happening to Burien right now, and so it's very much on everybody's mind, and it's grasping at straws. But if you have any suggestions for us, I think I can speak for everybody, all ears. I do, I guess I do have questions. Are there things to say when the city manager is talking to the county tomorrow? Are there things to, you know, emphasize or approaches that? Nope.
That's a good question. I don't have any specific advice, just given that, you know, I don't work for the county and I don't know what they're thinking of. I will mention that there is a health or housing site opening in Auburn. We don't have a specific timeline on the opening of that, but I've been told it might be within the next couple of months. But we do not cite those services. We do oversee the coordinated entry system, which fills a small portion of each health or housing bed. But that's an existing system that's already set up. And so it is not something that we can, you know, sort of jump the line on or anything like that. So I don't have, unfortunately, a ton of advice to provide for your meeting in the morning. But I do have a lot of sympathy for this situation. This is not something new. And I know that my sympathy does nothing for you, nor the people outside. But I just, I am, I'm with you all.
And I had one other sort of question slash observation, which is that when you have the graph of what you aren't, and it was not King County and it was not Seattle, I think it's really important to acknowledge that when cities outside of Seattle and King County are looking for solutions, they look to each other rather than they look to what happened in Burien. How did that work out? What happened in Auburn? How did that work out? So that's something that's really helpful and important for us to do is sometimes to say what's going on in all of the other places.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do.
Councilmember Moore?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for your work. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for continuing to inform both our community as well as all the other communities that you are educating. I look forward to seeing the five-year plan and continuing to hopefully maintain a partnership with our city and your organization. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo similarly. Don't have any questions. Just wanted to make comment and express appreciation. It's one of the most important bodies of work that impacts all of our region. So I just want to say thank you for the coordination and for the great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have a question about, we're grouped eventually in a region with Taquilla, Auburn, and Federal Way. So do you have suggestions on how to facilitate that connection? Should we be doing that now? Is that something that you will be doing as a convener? In terms of what we would need to do as a region together, how do you see that working?
Facilitating connections with other South King cities? Yeah, so we meet on a regular basis. I meet with the human services planners bi-weekly. They also join a lot of those other meetings that were listed on that slide. So it is something that's ongoing. The South King County Housing and Homelessness Partners also has representation from all of those cities and the Sound Cities Association, and we work really closely with. But we will continue to build relationships and continue to visit all councils, and certainly open to feedback on how we can include and involve councils more regularly as well, in addition to the work we do with all of the human services planners.
Other questions?
I'm glad you mentioned the Sound Cities Association. What feedback stands out as positive that was given to you in terms of how this planning is happening, and what are some challenges that they point out? Off the top of your head.
From the Sound Cities Association?
Or other, I know you mentioned you will get to City Group, so that's a major one.
Yeah, I do not do the bulk of the work with the Sound Cities Association. It's another colleague of mine at KC-HRA. So I, but I can certainly get some more information and send you an email on that.
And I would clarify that the SCA has representatives on both of our governing boards. So you all have avenues through our governing committee and our implementation board. You're represented through, on the governing committee, Ed Prince, Angela Bernie, and Nancy Backus. And so those are also an avenue for you to work with, as they're in our day-to-day business as part of our governance.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just have one more question. There was a slide on demographics on who's affected. And Heather, I'm wondering if you can pull that up. There was the solid bars, and let me know if I was interpreting that correctly. That reflects national statistics, but the dotted lines is the actual county or?
So I'll wait a moment if we're pulling it up. So yeah, the solid bars represent, it's all King County demographics that we're working with. The solid bars, the ones on the left, the more greeny, tealy ones, are the 2020 point-in-time count. And then the darker blue ones on the right are the 2022 point-in-time count. And then the dashed horizontal lines are the overall King County population, the proportion of folks identifying as those races in the overall King County population.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Like, for example, we have, in King County, overall, 65% of our population identify with whites, but 48% are represented in the count.
Okay. Yeah, correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was really helpful.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you so much for the information, and we look forward to you coming back.